Oh, my. We're back to the problem with the microphones.
I'll turn mine on.
Yep. Okay. We have this problem during budget, too, and these microphones are just out of control. Good evening, I would like to call to order the Kaiser City Council, it is Monday, May 7, 2018, and ask our city recorder to please call Ruhl. Counselor Ryan?
Sorry?
Here.
Counselor Freeman?
Here.
Counselor Reed?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
Counsel President Parsons?
Here.
Counsel Herrera?
Here.
And Counsel Anderson?
Here.
Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Well, I turned mine on that time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Phillip, if you could be working on this, it would be awesome. All right, in the meantime, we will try not to blast anybody's eardrums out and be very careful with the microphones again tonight. But I will start off with a special order of business, and that is a proclamation for National Foster Care Month, and it's my pleasure to welcome Jackie Frankie to come and accept this proclamation, so if you and the folks with you want to come on down to the testimony table and talk a little bit about Foster Care Month, and then I will read the proclamation and sign it. So just be careful of these microphones, they got in a mood last week during budget, and I don't know what set them off, but we have to be careful around them now, or they take revenge on us. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jackie Frankie, I'm representing Catholic Community Services and...
Yeah. Is that one on? Is it on? Oh, yes. Now you can see that.
Good evening, I'm Jackie Frankie, I'm representing Catholic Community Services and the Marion County Children and Families Commission, Family Preservation Action Team, FPAT. I'm really happy to be here and thank you for recognizing National Foster Care Month, which is in May. These are individual, foster parents that dedicate 24/7 to the kids in their care, and what they give and how they give, how they love, is just amazing. With little support, little acknowledgement, little appreciation, they do it year after year. And I did want to give some sobering statistics, just to say, let you know why this is so important and why we really want to recruit and retain more foster parents. There are approximately 600 children in Marion County in foster care. There are two types of foster care, one is relative, they're related, and the other is generous people like these that step up to take any child, with any type of disorder, any type of emotional behavioral problem, they accept them. And of the 600 children in foster care, 413 of them reside in 77 foster homes. That is all we have that are non-relative foster homes in Marion County, which means the average number of children in each home is five. And that's way too many to really, for a child to get the love and care, attention, support that they need to really go through this temporary traumatic time in their life. So I want to say thank you, our job is to go out and find more people like Jason and Kim who seriously do so much for the children, I just, I can't thank them enough, but I thank you for recognizing and acknowledge the work that they do.
Thank you very much.
Would you care to say what you think about your role as a foster parent?
If you could introduce yourselves, and thank you for serving the children in our community.
Thank you. My name's Jason White, my wife and I have been doing it for about six years, we found out about it at our church and just kind of felt the calling for it, and did the classes, and we've had, I don't know, probably seven or eight different kids, I think, throughout the years. And right now, we have two siblings, brother and sister, who are four and five.
This is their second time in care, and, well, actually, this is their third time in care, their second time with us. So we've been in their life for three years, so it's just, you know, we love them, and that's what, that's what we do, is we love them, so we open our home to them.
Does anybody have any questions? Well, it's my pleasure now to read this proclamation to acknowledge and thank and support the work that you are doing on behalf of the children of our community. Whereas we recognize the growth and development of children is the utmost importance, and every child deserves a safe, loving, and stable home. And whereas many children in our community must be temporarily removed from their homes to ensure that the child's physical and emotional needs are addressed. And whereas foster parents who open their hearts and their homes to support children whose birth families are in crisis play a vital role in providing a safe, strong foundation for children. And whereas there are numerous individuals in public and private organizations, the courts, and in the faith-based community who support, who work to support the foster care system and recruit foster families. And whereas May has been designated National Foster Care Month, and this year's theme is Empowering Caregivers, Strengthening Families, which emphasizes the importance of identifying, developing, and supporting prospective and current foster parents. Now therefore, I, Kathy Clark, Mayor of the City of Kaiser, along with the Kaiser City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as National Foster Care Month, and resolve to join with all those involved in the foster care system to thank individuals and families that provide support, affection, love, and security to the children in their care, and those organizations and agencies that support foster families. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Kaiser the 7th day of May, May 2018. Foster Care Month.
Thank you. I would like, I would like to extend an invitation to City Councilors and Mayor Clark, this Friday, right here in your beautiful facility, Department of Human Services is having a thank you event for foster parents, so if anyone would like to come even at the beginning and just say thank you to the people that are arriving, I think they'd really appreciate it.
Would you email the event information to us, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you for your service to our children. Thank you so much. Thank you, Jackie. Awesome. Love it. Thank you. Foster Care Month.
It is such a pleasure to be able to honor and thank people who serve the children in our community, and I know that so many people who are watching, as well as the sitting council, put a lot of time and effort into supporting the young people in our community, so we're going to keep on doing what we can to secure our children's future. So we'll now move on to committee reports, I don't have anybody here from a city committee, or Daryl, are you reporting for the city committee? Okay. So with that, then, we will move on to public testimony, this time is provided for, use my glasses, citizens to address the council on any matters other than those on the agenda scheduled for a public hearing. We have one public hearing, and that is the Neighborhood Market Number 7 Liquor License Application, so if you're here to speak on that, hang on a minute. And I only have one person signed up for public testimony, and that is Mr. Ryan Walsh.
I have another one.
Okay, so you're here for Agenda Item 8, and so that's all right with you, if we have questions, we can call you up at that point. Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to address the council tonight in public testimony? All right, moving on, then, we will go to the public hearing, and so I will open the public hearing on the Neighborhood Market Number 7 Liquor License Application, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On April 9, 2018, the city received an application for a new liquor license for Neighborhood Market Number 7, which will be loaded, located at 392 Schmauer Road North, Kaiser, Oregon. The application is for an off-premises license, as required by Kaiser ordinance, a public hearing was scheduled, notice was published, and mailed to all property owners within 200 feet of the proposed establishment. Kaiser Police Department reports a clear background check on the applicant, in addition, Kaiser Community Development Department finds the location of the establishment to be properly zoned, and has no additional comment on the application. It is recommended the public hearing be opened to allow testimony from the applicant or other interested individuals, and upon completion, the hearing be closed. It is further recommended that the council recommend approval of the application for Neighborhood Market Number 7, under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.166 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser. This recommendation shall then be forwarded to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions on the staff report? Seeing none, I don't have anybody signed up to, for public testimony, is there anybody who would like to speak to this issue? Okay, seeing none, then I will close the public hearing, and Counsel President Parsons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Ruth, I move that the Kaiser City Council approve the recommendation for the application of the Neighborhood Market Number 7, under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.166 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and then we send that recommendation to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval.
Second. It's my move, and seconded, that the Kaiser City Council recommend the approval of the application for the Neighborhood Market Number 7 Liquor License, under the guidelines as established by ORS 471.166 and the ordinances of the City of Kaiser, and to forward this to the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for final approval. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that takes care of public hearings, so tonight, we'll then go to Item 8A, which is Administrative Action Request for a Revision to the Park Management Agreement with Kaiser Little League. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney?
Quietly.
Watch that.
Hello, hello. Thank you, Chris, Madam Mayor, and Counsel. This matters before the council with regard to the request of Kaiser Little League as the park manager of the Kaiser Little League Park for a change in the management agreement. The management agreement calls for the net concession revenues and the tournament revenues, et cetera, to be used for upkeep of the park. And the president of Kaiser Little League met with Chris and I and indicated that because of the situation with the labor running the concession stand, and their indication that they can't really run the program if they do it that way, requested that they be able to use half, and I said, "Well, that's up to the council, because that would be changing the agreement." And so I said, "You need to submit something in writing," so he did, which I've attached there, requesting that the agreement be amended, so that 50% of the net concession revenue and all of the net, 50% of the net concession revenue go to use the park, and they get to retain 50%, and they also requested to remove the requirement that the tournament income go to the park. And so I've attached that request, in addition, and I won't go through the whole description, quite some time ago, the council had requested certain documents, and Kaiser Little League, as well as McNary Youth Baseball, formerly known as KYSA, submitted additional documents, so I took this opportunity to add those to the packet, if you have any questions on that, I think we have representatives that you can talk to that may want to speak to this point. So at this point, it's appropriate for the council to review the proposal and give staff direction on whether or not you want to amend the agreement as requested by Kaiser Little League. And then, in a related note, Ryan Walsh from McNary Youth Baseball wanted to ask about last year's concession revenues, because that apparently was what happened last year, is that half the net concession revenues were used towards the park. Any, can give us direction on whether or not you want us to address that issue, so those are, those are the points really for council, do you want to change the agreement going forward, yes or no, and regardless of that answer, is there any issue with regard to the issues for last year? So I've attached a lot of different documents, and I thought I'd take this opportunity, some of you that dug through the packet may have noted, the fancy word is redacted, blacked out some email addresses as we, on there, which is kind of ridiculous, because like, for example, Brad Arnsmaier, the president of Kaiser Little League's name is at the bottom of that, there's actually a state statute, it's not a crime or anything, but it basically says you shouldn't release people's emails without the permission, email addresses, not their identity, so we're going to try to start to be a little more careful about that with public documents, so. I'm sure that in this case, they don't care about people having their email addresses, pretty obvious, but that's what the state statute says. So that's why I thought I'd explain the blacked out portion there. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So it sounds like we need to give direction on how we want to proceed, so it sounds like there are, is there one matter or two, because I'm hearing one about going back to last year, or two going forward?
Really, it's two issues, is one, going forward, do you want to amend the agreement as requested by Kaiser Little League, again, that would be to change half the net concession revenue to go to the fields instead of all of it, and also the request that they keep the tournament revenue. Regardless of the answer to that first question, is there anything that you want us to do with regard to last year's revenue that was used, not exactly in conjunction with the way the contract says it was supposed to be used? And, and I don't know if Chris wants to speak to this, I mean, and I'm going to let the party speak for themselves, but they, they had some decent reasons when we spoke to Brad about why that was so, and he's coming in news, so he found that out about the first of the year, that, oops, that's not what we were doing, apparently, so. And before I forget, Madam Mayor, although it's not a public hearing, before the council gets into too much deliberation, you may want to give folks out there a chance to kind of address the issues.
And I do have some thoughts about this, but I'm willing to postpone letting those thoughts be known until after we get into the discussion a little bit, so.
All right, so does anybody have any questions, just upfront on the staff report, before we invite Ryan down, and I'm sorry, who, somebody came in, okay.
Hi, I'm Rob.
Okay. So, and you're with?
McNary.
Okay, so we have two Representatives McNary Baseball, and do we have, Clint, are you going to, are you authorized to speak on behalf of Little League?
Sure.
Okay. All right, yes. And it's probably Shannon or Chris, so we currently have an agreement, a contract, I'm assuming, right? So in the contract, is there any provisions where the city on an annual basis reviews income and expenses to ensure that our contract's being met?
There is no requirement that they do anything other than submit a budget, so that's going forward, so they submitted the budget back up, they submitted, and it's in your packet, and I think I had emailed this quite some time back, Kaiser Little League, and that's kind of what started the questions, is because I looked at that, and I said, "Well, these numbers don't jive." So when we met with Brad, he explained that, you know, he found out about the contract provisions after the fact, after last year's was up, so I hope that, does that answer your question? We don't, we don't review or audit the Kaiser Little League's books, if that's what you're asking.
So even though our grant agreement, or our agreement says they need to do certain things, we as a city don't do anything to ensure that that's being done?
We just get a copy of their budget after, and we requested last year's, so, and that's all the contract requires.
Okay, thank you.
It, well, it's really basically kind of on the honor system, if you will, I mean, we didn't, the council can direct differently, if you want us to do more of a actual kind of audit of what happens with the books, if you want us to do that, the contract doesn't require that.
Okay, further questions? So I would like to, oh, yes, Counsel Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have some questions on the numbers and the documentation that were submitted, I don't know if now's the appropriate time to ask those, or?
Sure, go for it.
Okay.
Is it, unless you want to direct anything particularly to one of the organizations who are represented?
Um, I suspect that most of these questions are for Kaiser Little League, so perhaps I should wait, then.
Okay. So, Mr. Walsh, do you want to come down and share with us your thoughts on, on this issue? Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
If you'd just introduce yourself and your city of residence for the record.
It's, my name's Ryan Walsh, I'm the president of McNary Youth Baseball, I appreciate all you guys allowing us a few minutes to come and speak, and first off, thank you for the Foster Care Month, I'm a foster parent myself, so it means a lot to me, so I do appreciate that very much. With this agreement, and Mr. Arnsmaier and Mr. Epley and I have talked, and we, as McNary Youth Baseball, are going forward, are in full agreement with the change in redaction, does make perfect sense to do 50-50 split on the concessions, it's a volunteer basis, they put their hard work and time into it, we feel like they should definitely benefit from that. Our biggest concern, our biggest talk is about last year, there was $12,000 that were, that was not put back in the fields. We got brought in here in December, and we're talking about a small $10 per field increase, a minor increase of $2,000 for our program, and the big talk was it was very tough to maintain the fields with the budget and money that they have, when there's $12,000 that was supposed to go into the fields that did not. And as a user of that field, and someone who pays for that field, that agreement was with me not only as McNary Youth Baseball, but also as a Kaiser citizen, that agreement and contract was signed, unfortunately, it wasn't read thoroughly, or wasn't read through, it wasn't understood, and in the end of the battle here, there's $12,000 that should have gone back in the fields for repairs and maintenance in the fields, it didn't. So going forward, we're 100% supportive of the redaction, we think it's the proper thing to do, the right thing to do, and it makes perfect sense to benefit from the hard work they're putting into it, absolutely. Our only issue is going back, that's 12 grand that probably should have gone back into the fields, per the agreement, that, that could have helped out a ton.
I have a question for you.
Absolutely.
If we asked for a demonstration of the equivalence, either through grants or other funds that were used, you know, granted, that were probably in the bookkeeping be supplanted, but can show the equivalence of that or more in the past year, would that, and that's, that would be documentation that we could add request of them, would that be something that would be a good starting point, from your point of view?
I mean, that's, that's absolutely, maybe your guys' call, I mean, we're game with whatever, we're just, we're just hung up on the fact there was an agreement that wasn't abided by. There was a breach contract that was clearly, unfortunately breached, and needs to be recovered somehow, absolutely. We want to see the fields be to their pristine condition, and that $12,000 could go a long, long way.
And they're looking great right now, I'll tell you what. So if anybody else doesn't have, do you have a question? I have one on the documentation you provided from KY, uh, sorry.
Either one works.
Well, that's what it says at the top, so. So it's talking about, it's your assets page, I'm sorry you don't have it in front of you, it has two line items that I don't understand, one is the capitalized assets at $126,000, and the other is the concession equipment at $12,000.
I noticed those as well, I spoke to our, this has been an ongoing, we went through different bookkeepers, so I spoke to past president and also to our attorney, and he said those are just assets that were, have always been carried over from when we had the fields, they weren't removed, they'll be removed next year. So they're just assets that were never removed, that, we have a third party that does all of our taxes and all of our money handling for us, so they were just assets that were on there that were going to be removed, they just shouldn't have been there.
They shouldn't have been there, okay, because I was having a hard time understanding how that fit into...
No, they were old Kaiser Little League assets that we had put down on there, apparently, from a past president, so when the paperwork got handed from, from one bookkeeper to the next bookkeeper, there wasn't a conversation on my behalf or anybody else's behalf that we don't have the fields any longer, so they just thought it was kosher to keep going with that, so it's our miss.
Okay. Thank you, that, that kind of clears some of that up, so, so that, that one doesn't add as, add, does not accurately reflect the financial situation with KYSA, but then the next page seemed to have more realistic numbers. I mean, I was a treasurer for Kaiser Soccer, so I know what those numbers are supposed to look like, and I saw those, and I was like, "What?" Didn't make sense to me, so this makes more sense in terms of the income and outgo for running a program, so I appreciate you taking the time to do that, and I look forward to, you know, these kinds of documents make me be more realistic.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate that. Any other questions for Mr. Walsh on the financials or the work? So are you guys underway?
Yeah, yeah, we're neck deep in it already.
All right.
It's been a busy last couple months already, so getting in the swing of things.
How many kids are playing?
About 160 T-ballers, and then what do we have, 70, so it's probably close to 300 kids this year, it's a big, nice big turnout, nice big turnout.
Hopefully, hopefully we'll keep this nice weather going.
It's beautiful.
So we don't have to call any games.
Knock on wood, Ray.
Knock on wood. All right, well, I appreciate your time, any other questions? All right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
So Clint, are you on the board?
Yes, I am.
All right, come on down, then. Thank you for being here tonight, we appreciate that.
Huh?
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for letting me have the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'd like to clear up some stuff here, if I could spend about four minutes.
Do you want to set the timer?
Of actually...
The timer's off.
Oh, okay, all right. We'll be on the honor system.
Boy, there's an echo here. Of actually, what actually happens up there that people don't see and people don't understand, if you can just give me a few minutes?
Okay, yep.
Two years ago, two and a half years ago, couples got together and we decided to take on the job, that's, I don't have this, I don't know who's got it, Rich Duncan did a survey that was going to cost $1.5 million to upgrade modernly that complex. So we started two and a half years ago, the first thing we did was Field 3. What a nightmare, it poured down rain, we stripped all the grass off of it, thanks to the church, who brought their whole crew over for the whole day on Sunday after church, they spent all the time laying sod there for us, and it was amazing, the things they did, and they did this year, all those poyson ivy vines and all the stuff that goes along that road all the way down, oh, we had four dump truck loads of stuff that we took off that hill, thanks again to the church. So we did Field 3, turned out really well, we then took on the task of the one right below the concession stand, which is Field Number 4. We had to strip all the material that was on the warning track, because what they did is put big round rock in there, so we stripped all that, probably two truckloads of stuff we stripped off, and we brought in cinder, that's the stuff that the Alkinal Stadium uses. And we made that field very modern, it's incredible what we've done there, we put pads on, thanks to the city that got us a grant, and the league finished paying for the balance of that stuff that needed to be done, we got a brand-new wall put in. We then jumped to Field 7 and 8. 7, last year, was the most immaculate field, when we got done with that, of anything in the valley. It's just incredible, the comments that we get all the time. So we did Field 7 and 8, and we completely stripped, somebody has to do all this, you know, it doesn't show in the books, but somebody's taken all the time, and the time we're talking about and money to have to be done, we're doing every year over $100,000 worth of work up there, over $100,000. Somebody's doing that, it's not coming out of the complex fund. So 7 and 8, we had to bring five loads of dirt, just to level the field, we completely rode it, tilted it, we killed the grass, we got seed, and it looks immaculate, I can't myself even believe how nice the complex looks up there.
It's gorgeous.
Then at late fall, we took on the concession stand below the equipment room, and that's Field 5, we completely gutted that, we put a brand-new fence in on the outfield, $20,355, okay? We brought in eight loads of dirt for that field because it was so low, okay? We brought in eight loads of dirt for that field because it was so low, okay? But we put a taper on that field. It's second to none. We got a very expensive mound that's there, so it could be used for different groups. But again, we got four fields now, or the best in the valley. There isn't anything that can compare it. And that's why all the district, All-Star stuff, is coming to Kaiser, which means it's going to help the businesses, it's going to help the restaurants, the motels, and everything. We're going to get probably a couple of state tournaments here, but the big thing is all the district stuff, a lot of that's coming back here. Last year, I take care of the concession stand. We completely redid the whole inside of the concession stand. That don't show on the books anywhere, but that was a lot of money. That took over a month to do. We repainted all the bathroom floors. We did a lot of stuff in the bathroom and the concession stand. We have to buy breakaway bases for every field. There's 12 fields there. There's 11.33 acres, okay? A set of bases is $295. We haven't been able to do that. That's a complex cost. We've been paying for some of that ourselves. We got, thanks to Tony Cuff, we got almost two brand-new tractors. Last year, I would think we had more tractors than the city of Kaiser did, truly.
And probably ran by...
Maybe not now because you've got a different budget now, but we had more tractors up there. We got two new ones. We got rid of junk that sits there and we never can use. These are big baggers. They can pick up the grass, which is important, thanks to Tony Cuff. Somebody has to pay for the rakes, the drags, the line. Every day, we line the fields. Every week, we paint the outfield. Somebody's got to pay for that. Mowing. Bill Lawyer can tell you, it's pretty tough to get on these fields and mow because they're so wet. We mow twice a week this time of year so that the grass is really short and that we can turn around with it being short like that. It dries faster. Forget the mowing. Watering's coming up. Somebody has to water. Somebody on some of the fields has to go there, Roland will know this, 12 o'clock, 2 o'clock, 4 o'clock, 6 o'clock in the morning, and change those sprinklers. We have some fields that have automatic sprinklers, but somebody has to go down and do all that. Field One and Two, these are the two fields up on top of the road. This literally cleaned us out of the complex fund. We completely redid every fence on Field One and Field Two up by the parking lot. And we made them modern, heavier weight. We strapped them better. I asked them to go back. Everything I tried to do, I over-engineered things like 25 or 50%. These guys were so good to us. Jim Coe did it for us. I think the city uses him. Robert said, "Talk to them" because they do a pretty good job, so I did. But we spent, I think we just paid that today, $25,000 for the fencing on two fields. But when I say backstop, going down the line, the outfield, we didn't do them at four feet. We went up for safety reasons up to six feet. Really looks nice. Somebody's got to pay for all the scoreboards. Only one scoreboard in all those fields work. We just acquired two scoreboards. We haven't got them up yet. They're sitting down at the field. We took them down last night. I got to get somebody to help us put them up because it's going to be a little hard to do. Thanks to my friend Noah, he helps us on all the bark dust, as he does the city. He bends over backwards for me, did it at the amphitheater, seeded the place for me, bark dust, everything. Can't say enough. Somebody has to buy the seed. Somebody has to get all the fertilizer. We fertilize three times a year. The city fertilizes one time a year, okay? We do weed control. Thanks to Greg Eagle, we wouldn't be able to do this. Greg Eagle bends over backwards at the amphitheater and also at the Kaiser Little Big Deal. We crane fly. We have a problem with crane fly down there. He sprays for that. Weed control. If you go down there and look at those fields, and we haven't sprayed since last fall, you won't find any weeds in the outfield or the infield. They're completely gone. Half the fields, two years ago when I got there, was nothing but weeds. Half of it was weeds. So, we've cleared all that up, thanks to Greg. Fertilize. He's doing twice a year for us all the lines on... Around the lines on the actual fields, outfield, and the backstop and everywhere else, wherever grass is growing along the lines. Security. Lot of work in security. Unbelievable. I've replaced three different security lights out there that get damaged. Somebody's got to pay for that. We just acquired, for the first time, Roland, remember when we had talked 15 years ago of putting a net over the wheel down below those four fields? Because balls are hitting people and different things, we just acquired the netting for that. We haven't got it up yet, but we've got the netting setting at one of the warehouses. Things like PGE build. You know where PGE build is? $9,723 last year. I'm just about done. Major jobs we got to do. I don't know how we're going to do this because I'm running out of people to tackle. The roof has to... The roof has to be done. We're having kind of a battle. I do not want to do the normal shingles. I want to put metal on the roof. And it's a lot more expensive, but it's the right way. It's over-engineering, but then you'll never have problems. Just got to bid $13,500 for shingles, $19,700 to put the metal on. We got to paint the buildings. We haven't done that in a long, long time. Parking lot is a nightmare. Showed you. So, Lawyer, the water that comes off the parking lot runs down the north road. It's that deep. It's a pipe at the end. Now, we have that big. We just got put in. And the water goes through that tube and goes into a proper drain. We have trouble with drains down there. When they put that concrete wall in, they crushed the drain deal, didn't fix it. And so, we're trying to find even where it is because it's pretty deep, but we got a lot of problem with waters. I met with Bill Lawyer and gave me some suggestions, and I think we're going to do that till we figure out how we can pave the parking lot. The cost on the parking lot, if we use crush rock, which is the proper stuff, we got round rock. People are falling. It's just a rough deal for elderly people, so I need to get that problem solved. If we pave it and do it the right way, only got one quote, $81,500. At one time, we could have done it for $39,000. Unbelievable. Where do we get the money to pay for all this? I got...
So, Clint, I'm going to... Because you're going to the future with what needs to happen, so I want to take a pause. Because you've been talking about the work that's been done last year and this year on the fields, and I think we are all in agreement. They look beautiful. And the safety and the quality is clearly there. So, what I'd like to do is press pause and see if anybody has any questions, and I've got two. So, I'm going to start with Council President Parsons, then go to Council Ryan.
Thank you. So, okay, so Clint, what I'm hearing, what I'm seeing in this information, what I'm hearing tonight is that Little League wants to take half the profits from the concession stand out of the equation to do the fields. Is that correct?
We really don't want to do that because it's all us that's doing all...
Why then? What's the reason? Because I have not seen one reason yet.
Because we're the only ones. I mean, years ago, and somebody else had the contract, if you remember, you had all the figures. $1,500, $1,900, lost $1,500. We have turned this thing around. I spend enormous amount of time making this profit help, okay? If we give all of it to... Why are we furnishing? We're the only ones furnishing the help. Nobody else is there to furnish the help.
So, what do they do with the money then if they don't put it back into the fields, that's what I'm asking.
Well, I just mentioned to you a minute ago, we spend 100 and some thousand a year on repairs of that stuff. A lot of that's our money that still helps to repair the complex. Yes.
Okay.
The program.
This will clear one thing up. Can I just... One more thing. Just take one minute.
Well, we've got people lined up for questions.
All right.
All right. So, I'm going to go to Council Ryan and then Council Reed. Okay. Go easy on it because then...
Just don't turn it. Just turn it on.
Yeah. And then bring it down a little bit so we don't get the feedback into the ceiling. Bring it down.
Don't touch but... Put it down. All right.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. I spent... First of all, Clint, I so appreciate all your work, and I hope I don't sound like unappreciative in my questions with you or comment. I spent a lot of time going over both the budgets and reading, and I know that I sat with you as a guest at your board of directors meetings, and we talked about, well, when they... And they questioned, "What's a budget look like? What do we need?" And I'll be honest, you gave such a great list here, and I don't have any of that here.
I know.
And not only... So, it's like you're not getting the credit you deserve, and it's hard for us to make any decisions based on... I mean, of course, you're sharing with us now, but until right now, we didn't have this information, right? So, not only that, but then there's, for example, I have a couple of questions, like the concession costs I don't see, and I don't see...
All you see is... What does it say on there?
Nothing.
Okay.
And so, and also, for example, like incoming revenue. I don't know how many kids you have. I don't know how much, you know, you're receiving from playing because you've mixed the complex with the KLLS One. And I... In my eyes, there are two because one's all about the kids and the other's about maintenance. So, I understand that's not the way it is. That's just my... How my brain works. And so, I look at this, and it's really hard to... Not because it's not needed, the maintenance, but it's really hard to understand and say... It's just hard to understand because there's so much information here. And for example, one thing I think is so important, and I've said this to both organizations, there's so many hundreds of hours of volunteers. And I said even just put that down. Put... Show how many people... Because it takes a village, and I know it. I've already said it a lot. But our parks, moving forward with our parks, it's a big responsibility to support the kids and the maintenance. But at the same time, you know, the amount of hours from both associations and all of you, I mean, it takes all of us to put this together. And that's why I really want to see at the end of the day, we have a unity, we come together for the kids. But, you know, getting there is really hard when we don't have the facts. It's really hard to give you the information and to make decisions when we don't have the information that should support you because you're doing an amazing job. You're listing it out. I, you know, that was my... I know you've heard it before. It was my first volunteer job, picking up rocks on the first field. I totally love what we've done and where we're going with it, but I don't know how to support you better when I just don't... I don't have all of that that we talked about needing.
To make it better, to answer your question, we have separated, because in some cases, we could do a lot better job than we did last year. One person controlled everything. That's not the case anymore. We separated the concession that I have a separate bank account. I write the checks. I pay the bills. I get the groceries. Knows exactly what's happened. That's why we went from the $8,000 that we made the year before up to $23,000 and something, okay? But that is a separate account now this year. The complex is a completely separate account. It's never been that way, ever. We keep it completely separate. We will give you a record of everything you want because you can just take a look at our financials. And then the Little League has a separate bank account that has nothing to do with the other two accounts, and I think...
That's going forward. You didn't have that separate...
We started that... No. We started that January 1. And if you want to look at all of those, what we're doing, I'd be glad to show it to you.
I'm going to just close my little statement here, and I've shared what... I didn't know they were separate. I think that's a great idea. We don't know that without seeing it. We just don't have those numbers. Kaiser's built on all of these volunteers making it happen for the kids, number one. That's always been number one. But I'm going to say, sharing the concessions to me gives incentive, I think incentive for the kids to get involved and being out there, you know, throwing snow cones and really trying to get more money for their program. I like the 50-50 because I think it provides incentive to the teams. But at the same time, I'm going to be honest, you know, with... We've had a policy in place. I know you above all knew the policy and the contract, so I guess I have a hard time that you at will broke the agreement because you felt like it, or I haven't heard an explanation. But, you know, showing that that money is do the program or the maintenance. When I get there, so much maintenance. But I want to help you, and I can't with what I have, so that's why I'm struggling, Clint. So, but I so appreciate all of both organizations.
We've got a great organization this year.
Both of you.
Brad's doing a good job. We got key people in key positions.
Thank you so much.
All right. Council Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, so in the briefing that we got, it said that pursuant to Section 4, Field Slot Payments, Net Tournament Income, net field-related sponsor income and net concession income shall be used to offset all costs incurred for the maintenance of the park. Okay, and then this letter that we got from Mr. Arnsmaier is requesting that 50% of just... Well, first of all, I didn't see any of that revenue included on the numbers. Well, all the... Well, half that revenue included on the numbers that we got. The sponsor income, the concessions, the... And tournament, I don't know if that was the outsiders that was listed on the... That line item. So, at least the sponsors and the concessions were not listed on that. So, again, with what Council Ryan was saying, we need full information for this. And so, just to be clear though, you're only requesting the 50-50 split for concessions, not the other sources of revenue? Not the field slot revenue, not the...
What did Brad request?
Well, I'm looking at his letter, and it just says the...
Two things.
Well, the first paragraph is just the concessions, and then the net tournament income, which I assume is the outsider income. So, those are the two things. But so, just to understand, the issue before us now is just the concessions splitting 50-50?
And the outside tournament.
Well, yeah. We haven't really talked about that part yet.
Yeah, they do outside tournaments. That's how they raise money for the league. A lot of leagues do that. A lot of even...
And so, that's the program again, not the complex expenses, which we're needing to differentiate here.
They're trying to raise money to pay for like All-Stars and everything else.
Okay. And then just kind of a follow-up to what Counselor Parsons was saying, as far as the other 50%, is that going back into the program or is that going back into the complex? Because I'm also seeing on here that there was an $18,000 from Kaiser Little League to the complex. So, is that $18,000 covering many of those items that you just discussed?
If you let me do this, I can explain where it all comes from.
Well, I... Okay.
You can get to it quickly.
Well, I don't want you to repeat what you've already said.
No, this is completely different. You're asking where the money comes from and where it goes.
Basically, just I guess follow-up to Counselor Parsons' question of where would that other 50% of the concessions go?
It goes to the Little League.
So, it goes back to the field complex or back to the program?
No, it goes back to the Little League program that we run there. That's where that goes.
That's why we were confused.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, I'm going to go to Shannon and then to...
And Clint can correct me if I'm wrong, but because Brad's not here and Chris. When we met with Brad, Arnsmaier, with regard to the $18,000 Counselor Reed you were referring to, my recollection, as Brad explained that, is that's a combined, and that $6,000 fits in there, Clint. It's roughly 12,000, which is half the net concession revenue, plus $6,000 of Kaiser League, Little League's other money that they contributed for the scoreboard. And that was... They're basically transferring that to the complex account, if you will. So, that's how they came up with approximately the...
Okay, so that $12,000 that was missing from last year is included in this $18,000?
The net concession revenue last year was approximately 24,000. Kaiser Little League contributed half of that to the field expenses, but they also added $6,000 of their own Little League money for the scoreboard, if you will. So, I mean, you know, you can look at that as a wash or not, or a partial wash or not. It's up to Council.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Go.
Okay. I want to explain so it's easy to understand where the money comes from.
I like easy.
Matching grant money. We got $10,000 from the grant, matching grant fund last year. Rotary, it's been awful nice to me. They gave us money, gave me money for the big toy, for the amphitheater. It goes on and on and on. They gave me $50,000 for that complex up there, $12,500 a year over four years, okay? KYSA contributed for their slot deal, $5,735. Kaiser Little League contributed $23,070. Outside sources, and I think most of all this is NAFTA, contribute $4,955. You add all that up... You add all that up, that's 33,760. And if you add it to the grant and the Rotary money, comes to 56,260.
Okay?
That's where that money comes from, okay? But we do over $100,000 in stuff on that complex all the time.
So, so, okay, so, is that second part, we have the spreadsheet that was provided by Brad, the Kaiser Little League complex accounting, which is fabulous, it is just about what the park needs. So, the electricity, the field supplies, et cetera, et cetera, some of the things you mentioned about fences, cinders, dirt, that's 20 grand right there, chalk, I can't pronounce it. So that showed the, the cost of running that complex and that's the kind of separation that is gonna be very helpful. So, just to finish up with that though, it's the grants and the other match that you guys have, that Little League has done, for example, the, the amount that was put in, that included, you know, the contribution to the scoreboard, you know, what it buys is not the issue in my mind, that it bought something for the complex, in my mind is the same, is, this is contributing to the operation of the complex, that makes sense to me. So, whether it's buying fertilizer or buying a scoreboard, it's going to the complex.
And we have a tendency, we can get things donated, bend arms, different things, get people to help us.
Well gee, you know, Kaiser volunteerism, yeah, never heard of it.
It's amazing, the hours, just three guys, Brad, Tony and myself, 9,000 hours last year. We kept track of ours, we don't keep track of everybody else that helps, I mean, the concession alone, every night, at least five or six people is in the concession working. Little League, only Little League does that. We have one tournament team, let me go back, that, that left KYSA, they have furnished help for us in the concession stand.
So, and I, I get that part. And everybody out there who's making baseball happen for the kids is volunteering tremendous amount of time and I completely respect everybody who's involved in making baseball happen from both organizations. It has been tremendous and it's turned the space into something that we're gonna be able to use for a good long time, so I appreciate that. Counselor Anderson, you had a question?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna be the mellow FM DJ tonight.
I know, I just want to back rock my.
First of all, I, I gotta say, it's, it's always incredible just to hear about the level of work, the volunteerism, you know, the hours and so forth that are, and all of the items that are donated, it's really unbelievable and it's amazing. I'm a little reluctant to wade into the weeds here, but I'm gonna wade a little bit here.
We have some fertilizer for that. Weed and feed?
I haven't been down to the Capitol lately, so that's, anyway, the, my, just to touch a little bit on what you mentioned here on the accounting sheet here that Mr. Arnsmaier provided us, I don't know if those, if the revenue and expenditures are for this period of time for January 1 through December 31, 2017 or what, it's not labeled at the top of that, so I presume that it is, but I don't know if that's actual expenses that were incurred over that time period.
That is for this sheet?
Yeah.
Yes.
That was my understanding from meeting with Brad.
Okay, okay. But I'll just tell you, I've gotten really confused between the information that we've had here and a lot of different information and that Mr. Holland conveyed, and so I'm a little confused over that. I would prefer to get a detail, you know, I appreciated what KYSA, now known as McNair Youth Baseball, provided with, I mean, this is kind of the, this detailed profit and loss statement, the income statement is kind of what I, is helpful to me in terms of being able to actually see all of the items that, that were expended and so forth. And that's my little personal preference, I'd prefer to, to get something like that, to get that detailed here, because I'm still not understanding, you know, because we've got total revenue at 35,705, our expenditures are 43,254, so I don't know what the, is that a, do we have a net loss in that instance or, you know, what, so that's why it would help me to have a more detailed accounting of that via an income statement of some kind. That's what I'm kind of used to and helps me kind of navigate when I have to make a decision along something like that. So, that's just kind of, I would just, you know, I'm not, I don't have a question or anything, but just, that's kind of, I'm a little confused and would like some more information on, on this whole thing. I do not want to detract at all what y'all are doing out there and the immense efforts that, that have been undertaken, so.
I'd like to have all you come out, buy you a hot dog, hamburger, and just look exactly what we've done.
$150 bucks.
Be shocked.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the I think.
Yeah, I appreciate that, so thank you so much, that's all I'll say.
Anything else on this side? Counselor Herrera, are you good? Okay, so I'll start back on this side and work my way back. Counselor Reed?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to clarify, so you said that there's a separate account for concessions, there's a separate account for the complex, is there a separate account for the program as well, the Kaiser Little League program?
Little League has their own board, they, that also really represents the concession, but we put it all in a separate account. Nobody controls that except the concession manager. Nobody controls the complex except the complex manager, which is Tony Cuff.
Okay, and does that have a separate account then?
A separate account.
Okay.
They write their own checks.
Okay.
They have their own credit cards, they have everything, so it's all separate. So, going forward here, everything you ask should be black and white, so you can say.
Okay, so there's no crossover as far as the complex and the program and there's no, no?
No.
Okay.
It's all separate.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Freeman?
So I just, you made a comment earlier about wanting to know what Brad emailed or what he was asking, so, I guess that's a red flag for me, so as a board, are you aware of what the ask is?
What, what?
What the ask is? So like, did you have a board meeting that had the discussion that this is the ask that's coming in tonight? Because I didn't get that.
I was not at one of the board meetings, but I've heard from different people what they were asking for.
And so as a board, did you vote on this or you just had a discussion?
I wasn't at it, so I can't tell you, I have to find out if they voted on it. But we did vote on separating all these accounts. That was an earlier one last year, or late last year. We voted at, I think, the annual, annual meeting to separate all these accounts so that they were all segregated, nothing is mixed.
Okay. Thank you.
It's never been done and I'm glad, I'm really glad we're doing that now.
Yeah. Good practice there. Does anybody, Counselor Ryan, did you have a question?
Do you have two, please, Madam Mayor? Clint, when you listed out the revenue, or I'm sure it's part of it?
The income?
Yeah, for KLL. One, part of that was the 12,000 from the?
Rotary.
No, Rotary was?
12,500.
Is it already 50,000 over four years?
It's over four years, but we don't get it.
I'm talking about the 12,000 from concessions that you were under contract to, to put back into the fields, right?
Right.
And, or, and then the other half, so, I don't want to make it more sticky, but the 12,000 that was, how do I say this, so it's in the contract and yet you chose to spend, you chose, meaning the board, chose to spend 12,000 that was actually agreed upon in your policy, the contract, that you were not gonna spend, right? I mean, am I saying that right, Chris?
No. So, what, what I, what I understand is that the, the net revenues for the concession stand for last year were roughly $24,000.
Right.
They chose internally to separate that out 50/50, they put 12,000 immediately into the fields, okay, into the complex, and then they took 12,000 and put it into their program account for Little League. Now what Clint is saying, and I quite honestly believe him and I'll tell you why, is that, yes, they did that, however, over the course of the year, they have put well more than $12,000 from their program funds back into the fields, either in purchasing the scoreboards and volunteer labor and grant, you know, et cetera, et cetera, so if you're looking for the $12,000, yes, yes, they brought it over, but they've put well more than that from their own program back into the fields, so does it wash? Here's why, here's why I'm less concerned about that. You're right in that, and this is, this is where I'm inserting my own, my own opinion against my own fair judgment, but, you're right in that technically they broke the letter of the contract. And I would be concerned about that if the fields weren't looking good. And the reason the contract is in place is so that the fields get maintained, okay? That's the only reason we have a contract, there's, there's two reasons we have a contract. One is that the complex is maintained appropriately so the kids can play baseball. And that's the overarching, by far, most important of the two goals. The other goal is so that if there are other groups, because the two groups, the one group split into two, because there are two groups, they each want to see what each other is doing so that they can hold each other accountable. And somehow, we end up getting involved in that, okay? And that's unfortunate and we shouldn't be involved in that, we should let kids play baseball. And so what I'm trying to do and what I know that each group wants to eventually do, if we can somehow come to agreement, is to find a scenario whereby there is either a third party that just operates the complex, and that there are no field slot rates, and that Kaiser teams get to play on the fields without having to pay outside of their program, and that that independent third-party group that manages the complex is able to do tournaments and concessions and whatever they need to do to raise enough money to cover the operating expenses of the complex, perhaps with the city jumping in to do some of the major projects like, like drainage, you know, some things that is just not feasible for a small group to do, that we can schedule out. The city's involvement would be to identify a series of goals over five, six, eight years for them to strive toward, and as long as they're meeting those goals, I don't want to see their financials, I want them to play baseball. So, the quicker we can get out of having to, to review and audit baseball financials, the better off we're gonna be. That's my opinion.
So I guess my question is, how did it, was there a board decision to, to spend that money that way and, and negate the contract? Or did, was it not known, did somebody not read the contract? I guess that's what I'm trying to find out, is how did, how did you get to that decision to spend the money? I get where it went, I get the justification, but I, I'm trying to figure out, did y'all have a board meeting and say, let's do, let's do this, or I guess that's what I'm wondering how this happened?
Put the, all the extra money in, which I figure is over 50,000 that we put in, because it has to be done, there's things that we have to do to get that complex up and the league's been willing to, to do that. We go out and find sometimes donations, we go out and find in-kind stuff.
Right. But in this case, it's $12,000 that, that, that was in the policy, the procedure that you all agreed to, that you signed.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're accountable to all the taxpayers and we're looking at parks and all these great things they want to do, so I want to follow through. To Chris's point, I totally understand, but I just see it as a little bit separate issue of, of honoring an agreement that you made. And so that to me is important and I, and I did want to bring up, because this came up at your board meeting as well and I brought it up, is how to support the kids in Kaiser more so it's less expensive, if a team has maybe 90% Kaiser kids, that they're not paying all of the expenses that a tournament team, traveling team would pay. I think that's really important, to keep the cost down for, for our Kaiser kids and it shouldn't be included in what they pay to play.
And that's, I threw those ideas out there just because I'm looking into the future, but that, that doesn't?
We discussed it at the board meeting, which is why I bring it up again, because it's not a new concept and I hope that that's, I, something that's, it's easy, it would be easier to overlook all the maintenance if we were doing more for the Kaiser kids financially. Thank you.
Okay, so what I'd like to do at this point is, we have two decision points and let's start with the first one of going forward regarding the, amended the contract to allow the 50/50 split on concessions. So, I'm looking to Shannon, do I, since this is not in the packet, do I need to do a motion to take that action or?
Right, and so the question on the first part, it would be, if, if the council so chooses, would be a motion to direct staff to come back with an amendment to allow the request.
All right, so, Counsel President Parsons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so I move that the Kaiser City Council directs staff to come back with an amendment to the contract of a 50/50 split going forward on the concession stand, and I would also like to add in the managers, can I add that one into or does that have to be a separate motion? The other, the other thing on here, the second?
Tournament revenue?
The tournament revenue.
Right, I think that was part of the request.
Okay, perfect, and, and that the tournament revenue be, they be able to keep that tournament revenue as noticed in that exact verbiage on that.
As requested?
As requested, yes.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of a second?
I was gonna second.
Oh, you were?
I will second.
You will second?
Throw it on the table, you got you.
All right, so, copy, paste that motion and we now have a second from Counselor Anderson. Discussion.
I'll make some discussion, I think there's been a lot of asks for tonight as far as financials and some other things and I think I need to see those before I can vote for a yes on this.
Okay.
Not that there's not great work going on, but I'm just a little concerned that there may have been a board meeting that may have discussed this, may not have, Clint wasn't there, so he can't speak to that in all fairness, but I'm just, there's just too many unknowns for me right now, so.
Yeah, and, you know, I would comment that both organizations appear to be comfortable with this going forward, as Mr. Walsh also was very positive about this, on going forward, making this change, so it sounds like this is something that both organizations agree to. Counselor Herrera and then Counselor, Counsel President Parsons?
Yes, on the second part of that, where you added the income excluded from the, from the complex managers, could you tell me a little bit about that?
About what?
The tournament, the tournament income is excluded for managers of the complex, they cannot, on the second part of this, the second request?
The tournament you're talking about is the Irish tournament that we put on?
Actually Clint, it's any tournament revenue, what Brad's requesting is retaining half the net concession revenue for the program and all of the tournament revenue.
Because we're doing that as a fundraiser.
Right.
Instead of selling candy and pepperoni sticks.
To me that makes sense, I mean, why was it on the, on the list of exclusions in the first place, as far as managers can?
The contract's been like that for quite some time and I think the concept was that virtually, and, and maybe, and I think what Little League's argument is, is maybe that was asking for too much. But it's been on there for a while in terms of the net tournament revenue to be used for the fields, and I think there's, there is a lot of revenues that are left after this list, so.
If I recall correctly, when, when KYSA came into being, I mean, this, this has been what, 10 years now that we've been operating with two separate programs, right?
It's been a while.
So, I think as we were writing that contract, that first contract, the fear was that tournaments would be lucrative enough to displace Little League and/or KYA, KYSA baseball, and therefore we wanted to make it so that it was not as lucrative to them, so that we would discourage the tournaments, so that kids would play baseball. I think that's why that was written that way. As it's turned out, typically the tournaments are scheduled and played at off times that don't conflict with the programmatic baseball games to begin with. And maybe, one way to approach this is to write it so that that revenue gets to be kept as long as a tournament doesn't displace scheduled KYSA or McNair Youth Baseball League games or something like that, so that it doesn't displace Kaiser kids from playing baseball.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
Like that. Comments? Counselor Anderson?
Sorry, I thought Counselor Parsons.
I saw the wheels turning.
Well, I wanted to just actually second what Counselor Freeman mentioned, I, well, before I say anything, I want to ask a question, this will be coming back to us.
Correct. This is direct to direct staff.
That's part of the reason why I wanted to kind of get the, sorry, get the ball rolling on this.
Here we go.
I missed my Rotary meeting last week, so I didn't get to use that one.
Okay, we'll pay for it now.
Anyway, sorry. But I wanted to, I wanted to get things moving along here, and so I figured that we would be getting this back. I would like to get some more understanding financially. I'd like to get, I appreciate Clint being here tonight and going through some of this stuff, but again, lots of information thrown out, thrown out at us here on top of this that we got here. And so I would hope that Mr. Arnsmore could be back here when we do, when this does come up again, because I'd like to really hear it from, you know, how things, with the sentiments of the board, their action and so forth. I'd also like more accounting information, real, you know, not, not wanting to put the city into the position of being an auditor or anything, but, you know, this is a contract that we have with them. I'd still like to get a better handle on things. I mean, we've got, we've got lots of different organizations that, that are out there doing different things, and honestly, I don't know if that is a good or bad thing. It being separated, or pigeonholed, whatever you want to call it, differentiated, it just seems like there's a lot of things moving around here that, that really still I'm, I'm a bit confused with. I appreciate KYSA coming in and testifying about this, that their comfort level is, is okay on this ask. And I want to help definitely, I just need some more information on that, but I'm willing to have something come back to us, and it would, hope in the interim, that we'd have some of that information coming back when we bring this up again. Thank you.
Thank you. Council President Parsons?
So to clarify, Council Freeman and Council Anderson, what you want is what he said to us tonight on a piece of paper. Is that what you want, showing who, yeah, more detail. Who donated the money? Who donated the grants? Who, is that what you're asking for?
And, and the, I'd like to see the three different sorts of accounts, the, you know, the concessions, the program, and the complex.
Right. I understand, but I mean, I, I have to agree with, with, with city manager, though, in that we are not the overseers of their financials, right? And so I have to, I have to say, I mean, yes, we, we want to see their profit and loss, we want to see, and you have three different accounts now, so obviously, we need to see all three of those. But I think, in, in clarifying what you guys want, is what he said tonight, where is the money coming from? Who's donating the money? Who's giving the hours? Is that what we're saying? Who's donating the sod, the fences, or whatever? I mean, is that what you guys want, as a clarification, or you just want the three separate accounts? I'm, I guess I'm not understanding.
Well, I think the information's great, and just because, for me, I guess I want to, I need to know that the board is okay with this. I wasn't sure, I didn't, you know, Clint wasn't there, he can't speak to it. It's like, is Brad just asking for this and everyone doesn't know? I highly doubt that, but I don't know that. And, and I appreciate KYSA the same, but there's just too many unknowns for me, and I think if you're going to make your case, you need to make it very, very clear, and...
And if I might, Madam Mayor, just to chime in, it's really just, okay, great, this, this went from here to here, I just want to, okay, so what's, it's coming in from one place, where is it going? What's it going for? The 50-50 split, okay, fine. What's that 50 going to be used for? If it's going to be used to go plug back into the, the field maintenance or whatever, great, then let's have that out there. I'd like to know that. That's all.
Okay, so what I'm hearing that is, in coming back with language regarding the contract, also the, the complex accounting, and thank you for splitting that, by the way. It makes it much clearer, because, you know, how both of you run your programs, that's between you and the state, because you have to turn in your stuff to the state as a 501(c)(3). That's great. The piece I'm interested in, and for me, the only piece I'm interested in is the complex, because that belongs to the people of Kaiser for the use of our, of all the people in Kaiser. And that's where it really helps me to understand what it really takes to run this complex. So this is helpful. This spreadsheet is a first, that really starts delineating the expenditures, what it takes to run this place. And quite frankly, you guys are doing fabulously. You know, that's a lot of work, that's a lot of effort, that's gone into making that a showcase, and deeply, deeply appreciated. So this helps us understand what it takes, helps you in two ways, I think it helps both organizations, is a reality check on what it really takes. And when you're writing grants, when you can produce those documents, boom, it's fabulous, because you can show all of the match that you already have going forward. So it's a, it's a win. So any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously.
Sounded really weak.
All right, I wanted to listen carefully. All right. So on the second issue, I'm going to move forward on one thing. So on the second issue regarding the previous year, I would like to throw an idea out there and see how you feel about it. Because they didn't start splitting off the accounting until this year, what I would ask, if it'd be all right with you, if Kaiser Little League could come back with showing the, the equivalents, the funds, how they were used, maybe they didn't come out line item by line item, but if they can show total to total, would you be okay with that? Okay, I'm got by consensus?
What does that mean?
That means that the amount that if, if you take the funds that were to be put in, but you can show in-kind, grant match, not, not the grant itself, but the match that was put out, for example, you mentioned the scoreboard, that counts, but, you know, by the way you wrote it up, it looked different. So what I would like to see is that the amount that was supposed to go into the complex, show that it went in the complex, however it went in the complex. If it went into a scoreboard, if it went into a mower, if it went into fertilizer, if it went into a light bulb, or-
Netting, or whatever.
Yeah, or whatever.
Up to $12,000.
Show up to that amount. Show that, show where, that it came into the complex and by whatever avenue. Can, can the board do that? Would the council like to see that information? And then, would that suffice to help show equivalency and compliance with the contract? Because we do have to comply with the contract. You know, we signed it, and we want to make sure that we comply with the agreements we make. But if we can find a way that is, satisfies the contract by showing the, the amount that's supposed to win the complex and that did go in the complex, would that satisfy the contract? Shannon?
I think, that's a question for council, not for me. I think Chris and I have an idea of what the council's looking for, unless some of the councillors have a different idea of the direction the mayor's going. Getting together with Brad and other members and getting those numbers, and then double-checking them, probably would mean the first meeting in June to get it in the packet in time. I just want to make sure that's okay with you folks. It's not, I don't think realistic to come back in two weeks, based on the packet deadline, so I just want to make sure that's okay with council.
Better do, take the time and do it right.
That's, would be my suggestion, yeah.
Any concerns, council? All right. I think we have come to a consensus on how we can move forward and honor the work that's been done by Kaiser Little League, and it's going to take me a while, McNairy Youth Baseball. Old habits die hard, and the main thing is that our young people are out there playing ball on beautiful fields that's safe for them to participate in outdoor sports, and a lot of volunteers are making it happen. Any final thoughts? Council Herrera?
Does anybody else remember when there was only one program?
Please.
I always thought about that, when we switched to two programs, it became a little more, you know, and maybe, there's some good in that, because we're learning how to, how to document our time, how to write the expenditures to where we're satisfied, because we have a contract, you got to kind of go by it, you know? And I see two sides here. I, and the bottom line is like Chris said, you know, we're making it kind of complicated for, and we just want kids to play baseball. Let's do the minimal, let's try to get, I don't know, I still see two sides kind of checking each other a little bit, but hopefully, we'll get through this.
It's actually four different groups.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, I guess, I guess I miss the old days.
There's two tournament teams, and then KYSA and Kaiser Little League.
Okay. Well, I will say this, there's some good things, the complex looking better. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Council Ryan has one, one comment, and then I'll let you close.
I just want to make, oh, okay. I just want to make sure you feel comfortable with that date given, because I know it's season, I know every, you know, you're in full swing. I didn't even mean to do it. Sorry. But that you're, so we can sit here and give you a date all day long, but if you, if that's not, you know, I don't even know when your board meets, is that, is that fair to say we can get everything together to make a decision by June 1st? Is that, is that good for you, Clint?
Well, it's gonna be-
You need more time.
It's, no, it's going to be a tough job to do, because one guy controlled all that stuff, his computer failed, it's hard for us to get some of those records. That's the problem, or we would have had it black and white.
So if I can make a recommendation, you sat here and made a fabulous list, because it's in your brain and you know it and live it every day, so sit down and make the list if you, I think you all agree. I mean, I, we're not asking for receipts, we tried that once, it didn't work. So I'm saying it lovingly, Clint, you know, we adore you and we appreciate all your work. So if you just take, make that list and, you know, is that what we're saying?
And we'll, and Shannon and Chris will be able to work with Brad and get that information.
Yes, exactly. And I just think a date of, of, you know, getting to get back together is important for a follow-up. I just want to make sure it's good for you, Clint. Okay, thank you.
All right, and so staff will do that. Clint, you want to close, take a moment?
I met with Chris, and we, what I'm worried about when I leave here, are we going to be able to keep up with the maintenance on this? And we just mentioned, they were only taking in $33,760. We've got to do something to get where we're modern and get stuff up on the fees to where it should belong. I gave Chris the City of Salem's deal, and they charge 60, or $20 an hour, where we have, each slot is three and a half hours, okay? So you can just see the difference that it takes to maintain it with the City of Salem's doing versus what we're doing. In addition to it, I asked the city, who pays for the repair of the fences, and who pays for the repair of the buildings and stuff? I says, is that included in that 60-some dollars? And they said, no, we just eat the cost of that. Well, we have to eat the cost of that. We have to put the roof on, we have to do all this stuff, and $35 or $40 doesn't come anywhere close just to keep it, after we get everything going, just to keep at that level. And that's what I'm worried about.
City Manager?
Clint, you're not going to like to hear this, but I'm going to say it anyway, just because it's fun. You can't charge enough to cover those costs and still have a baseball program that'll play on those fields. I'm convinced of that. And that's why we need to come up with another way of doing business. Field slots isn't the answer. It's something else. It's tournaments, it's some group dedicated toward making revenues for the complex. It's not getting the kids out there to sell Milk Duds. It's something very different.
And if I may follow up with that, a lot of that, we've, what we've done with our parks, you know, we are now more comprehensive in what we can do, and something that I've heard from members of the Parks Board in conversations with the city manager is, we need to take the good work, the good foundation that's been laid, and as we look forward to what the next contract is going to look like, take a more comprehensive look at what it will take to sustainably maintain and operate this complex on behalf of the people of Kaiser. And I think that is an in-depth conversation we're going to have to have. There are some, with, maybe put together a task force that will actually dive in to the details on what this is going to look like with long-term sustainability, because, Clint, you're right. It took a lot of work to get everything back to where it needs to be, to be safe and playable. And I would hate to have any of that hard work go to waste. So we need to have that conversation, we need a task force that is going to address that and gets this figured out once and for all. That conversation will happen, and I'll work with the Parks Board members, people are interested in pursuing, looking at different models, and with the city staff, on putting together a sustainable, long-term plan for maintaining that park appropriately and keeping it accessible for the kids of Kaiser. So that is something we're going to have to move forward with, and to honor the work that has been done by all of the volunteers and all of the people who've donated to this great complex for the kids of Kaiser. Okay? So we'll be pushing forward that probably much sooner than later.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Clint.
All right, thank you very much. Home run. All right. I think we should go to the consent calendar. What about you? Council President Parsons, would you please read the items on the consent calendar tonight?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three items on the consent calendar tonight. Item A is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase a Ford K8A all-wheel-drive police interceptor utility vehicle for the police department. B is the Kaiser Police Department's petty cash report. C, approval of the April 16, 2018 city council regular session minutes.
Thank you very much. Are there any polls? See none, Council President Parsons?
I move approval of items A through C.
Second. The consent calendar has been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, council liaison reports, and I would like to, with the council's indulgence, to ask Matt Lawyer, he wasn't here earlier, to come up and give us a brief report from the Claggett Creek Watershed Council. I could give it, but it's going to be much more interesting coming from the person who organized all this stuff.
The newspaper said brief. God, I'm getting a bad reputation right here. Madam Mayor, members of the council staff, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity, really quick. First thing I want to plug is, this Saturday, we're doing sort of a preliminary cleanup down at the orchard to prepare for its next adventure in the world of agriculture. So we're expecting to have a bunch of middle schoolers out there cleaning up sticks and making bigger piles bigger. So it should be a fun event, 9:00 AM this Saturday, meeting near the big toys, so if folks want to come and help out with that, bring gloves, and that should be about all you need, so. I just wanted to take a second and talk really quickly about the event we had on April 21st, which was the soggy day in the park, which was anything but soggy, it was absolutely gorgeous. We put a lot of work into trying not to overplan the event, because we didn't really know what we would expect out of it. As the Claggett Creek Watershed Council, we do a lot of asking, and we're always asking folks to come and give their time, and we put in hundreds of hours a year, you know, working in the city. And this kind of started initially as the sort of opening of the arboretum. Unfortunately, timing was such where that wasn't going to be able to happen, but we still celebrated the arboretum with Wilbur Bloom and some other folks that were out there. But it really turned into an opportunity for the Claggett Creek Watershed Council to give back to the community of Kaiser and really celebrate the unique nature of Kaiser Rapids Park as a natural area, as part of the watershed. And so we had, I'm not going to call them bouncy houses, because I can see Shannon looking at me, but we had inflatable stepping-on devices that had obsolete corpses in the slide.
That did not become dirigibles.
That's correct, yeah. And it was great, that was sponsored by Willamette Valley Appliance. The City of Kaiser brought out a backhoe, and Robert Johnson spent three and a half hours straight bent over, working with kids and teaching them how to operate a backhoe. Mark Callier had his jet boat out, and we gave, I think, 75 or 80 folks boat rides up and down the Willamette, kind of checking out some of the areas. We did have our nature tour, where Dorothy Deal, former environmental staffer at the city, provided some of those. Adams River Smokehouse came out and gave away 250 hot dogs over the course of the day. And then, like I said, with those inflatable devices for fun, A to Z Party Rental came through at the last minute and actually helped us with it, because the other guy that kind of wrote a contract on a napkin and threw it out in the air and expected us to catch him, made it a little tough on us. So it was a great event. We would have called it a success with about 50 people, but we ended up having over 300 for the day, all free. The worst criticism we had was there was no water, except for what the mayor came and brought, because she had her water with Kathy Day that day.
Coffee.
A little hot for coffee that day, but Cert was awesome. They kind of coordinated the boat effort and getting folks signed up with the middle schoolers. They actually did all the volunteer forms, and we did get some compost placed around the 76 trees. So it was a service day, but it turned into a really fun day, and I just really want to say and thank the City of Kaiser for allowing that to happen. Thank the public works staff for bringing out the backhoe and, and doing that, and then just really thank the City of Kaiser for just an amazing- And then just really thank the City of Kaiser for just an amazing event. And we're really looking forward to possibly carrying on this tradition. So that's pretty much it. Again, this Saturday, 9:00 AM out at the big toy, we're going to be doing the cleanup. And then going to be kind of going on pause. We're working on a different project right now that's not necessarily physical service-related, but we're working and going headlong into a story map project that we're really excited about. Salem's going to partner with us a little bit more on it. And so that's to come, so.
Can I press pause on that one for just a sec? Council Herrera, you're the liaison to Kaiser Points of Interest, are you not? Okay. So one thing I mentioned, and I had the opportunity to sit in at Claggett Creek Watershed Council while Councilor Anderson was celebrating the fact he won't have to write any more tuition checks for his daughter who graduated from college, congratulations. I think this is a natural for, on the historical research, for the Kaiser Points of Interest to get involved. So would you connect with the Claggett Creek Watershed Council and ask if they would consider taking up this project and assist with the historical research? They didn't allow the background already with a similar project with the flood pole. And this seems just right up their alley, so.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thanks, Council Herrera. I always like working with you. So no, it'll be great. We're actually engaging the local schools, Oregon State, Willamette, Western, and Shemec to try to partner that and sort of find the niche groups, whether it's GIS or get it surveyed for everyone else. Historical, archaeological, environmental, all that kind of stuff. So really excited to do it. Hopefully, you know, this has been a really big desire of Mark Akamoff with the City of Kaiser to want to kind of push this and he's done a really good job of keeping us motivated and on track for it. So good things to come, but again, May 12th, 9:00 AM, big toy, pick up sticks.
All right, sounds good. Any questions? All right, thank you very much and thank you for all the work out in our parks. It's been fabulous. All right, so for council reports, Council Anderson, I know you just got back, but what you got?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Really nothing previously. You've already, you mentioned what I've been doing the last five days. So kind of on the road down and back to the LA area, so. So we're celebrating that awesome event in my household. Still, just for me, coming up, May 9th, I'll be at the Kaiser Chamber Board Meeting, I believe. I hope I've got that one correct. I sometimes do and I sometimes, my calendar kind of goes haywire on me occasionally. So I think I've got that coming up this week. And then I'll be sitting in for Councilor Parsons at the County Commissioner Breakfast Meeting on Thursday. And that is all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Council Herrera.
Testing. Yes, I want to, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to compliment our planning department for the revitalization meeting that I attended on April 26th. And we had a pretty good turnout. I think that was well explained and Nate did a great job. And there'll be more meetings, correct? Right, okay. Also, I wanted to tell folks that this is, being that I work with teachers quite a bit, this is National Teacher Appreciation Week. I don't know if you guys know that.
Teachers.
If you see a teacher, thank them. I thank them every day, believe it or not. So, Councilor, I really appreciate what you do. And not all the teachers. And believe me, I work with you guys, I know. Also, I wanted to say something about Cinco de Mayo. I spent up in Portland with some friends. And again, I will say it again, Cinco de Mayo is not Mexican Independence Day. That's in September, okay? Everybody get that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Also, we have our event coming up Thursday for our first annual Latino graduation reception. And I don't know what to expect, but it should be pretty simple and pretty fun. And it's a good event and hopefully you guys can make it. And I do want to thank Councilor Parsons and Councilor Anderson for the contribution very much to our, and I really appreciate that. Last but not least, we have a fire department's 70th anniversary coming up. And of course, we have our Mother's Day breakfast coming up also. And make sure to buy your mother a nice tequila or something. Because you're probably the reason she drinks. I'm just kidding. Somebody told me that today. I thought it was pretty, but anyway, that's pretty much for it. There's a lot of other events coming up in terms of our meetings, but we can address those later. But like I say, I want to thank the people involved for our little event coming up on Thursday because it's been hard work by four people. And I want to compliment the Glodias and Pastor Dominguez. So thank you very much, that's all.
All right, thank you very much. Council President Parsons.
I'll make mine quick. It's Councilor Freeman's birthday, by the way. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
So I think she might want to get out of here. So I'm going to make this, I'm going to make this quick just because I know she wants to get out of here. So I had the Kaiser Festival Advisory Board where it was a short meeting. Basically, we had three bands that we needed to approve for the summer concert series. So we approved those bands and then we're going to be gearing up in the next couple, in the next meeting that we have for the holidays already. So, you know, we only meet once a quarter, so it goes pretty quick. But that's, he's going to fill in for me Thursday morning because I have PT, as you can see. And that's going to go on for a long time. And let me see, other than that, I don't have anything. I'm good.
Glad to have you back and on the road to recovery.
Thanks.
All right. I need my pen back. Make this way back. Anyway, Council Herrera, you have something to add? Did you have something to add?
Oh, yes, I did. I forgot something. We lost a good friend of Kaiser and a good friend of a lot of people. Don Patterson died away, passed away on April 16th while vacationing in Mexico. And we had his reception Sunday. It was packed. And if you don't know Don Patterson, Don and Linda, I've known him for years and years and I've never seen one without the other. I mean, and it was very fitting. So I want to tribute that to Don Patterson from this, by the way, he's from my hometown of San Antonio, Texas. So we had a special bond. He passed away while they were vacationing in Mexico. It was a really sad situation, but just wanted to mention that because he was a friend of the community and he was always involved in all kinds of Kaiser events. And he's going to be missed. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, really appreciate that. Council Reed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, spring sports wrapping up at McNary. We're starting to go into districts and that is exciting to see. One thing that I did want to point out about sports and activities, got the information that three of our sports and activities were in the top 10 in their respective categories for GPA. The OSA keeps track of this and our baseball team was ninth in the state in terms of their cumulative GPA. Our orchestra was fourth in the state in terms of their cumulative GPA. And our girls' track were first. Number one in the state with the cumulative GPA of 3.85. So really excited to see that. That's quite an accomplishment and shows how important it is to be involved in activities. It starts at school and then hopefully continues into the future with the city. AP testing began today and that will be taking up the next two weeks. So that is something that a lot of our kids are involved in. Went to the Word Slam that Eric was spearheading and that was a fantastic night, just really impressive. A lot of really talented kids and really appreciate Eric and his efforts with that. And they're wonderful kids. I attended a Kaiser Community Band Concert. They were part of a Silverton Band Festival last, two Saturdays ago. And they have an upcoming concert on May 16th at McNary at 7:00. So that is, and they've got a really excellent program, some really good pieces. And again, a lot of really committed musicians of all ages in that group. Nobody's mentioned it yet, but we had fun with Budget.
That was so last week.
And just a real thank you to Tim. That was, it ran very smoothly, a lot of numbers dancing around, doing just everything they were supposed to do, the numbers were. And Tim orchestrated that whole party and it was, went very smoothly and effectively. So thank you. And thank you for all of the city staff who was instrumental in putting that together. Fox in the Fairway was Kaiser Homegrown Theater's opening last weekend. And Council Ryan and I were at opening night and so that was a lot of fun. It was a fantastic show, really good. And that goes for the next two weekends. So Friday, Saturday nights and then Sunday matinees for the next two weekends. We've got the Stormwater Advisory Committee coming up this week and that will be interesting to learn more about. And we have Distinguished Young Women on the 12th and that starts at 4:00 PM. And that is always a really exciting community event. We had the state choir competition last Saturday and our choir did a fantastic job with that. Orchestra state competitions on the 10th and band is on the 12th. And there was an awesome 3,000 going on last Saturday and a lot of our Kaiser kids were involved in that. And that was a lot of fun as well. So that is my report.
All right, thank you very much. May is a busy time. Council Freeman.
I too want to thank staff and our budget committee and the citizens too for participating in Budget last week. We, I think we're on a roll two nights to approve the budget, so that's great. This week, on Wednesday, is the Planning Commission at 6:00 PM. Thursday is the West Kaiser Neighborhood at 7:00 along with the Latino graduation. I will not be at West Kaiser because I am going to attend the Latino graduation. They know that, so I just, I'd let them know that probably a counselor would not be there because I assumed most of us would be at the other event. But if anyone wants to go in my place, that's great. Stormwater also this week. There is no Volunteer Coordinating Committee for May, but we do have several openings and a press release went out on May 2nd. So we do have one vacancy on the Kaiser Points of Interest Committee, one on the Festival Advisory Board. Says Public Art Commission, but there's nothing on there. Is there one, one or two? Okay. And then we do have Community Services and Housing Commission. There's a representative needed on that. And then we're also recruiting always for youth liaison. The deadline is Wednesday, June 13th. All this information can be found on our website. And it just needs to be turned in, your application by June 13th to be considered for the June 21st Volunteer Coordinating Committee. And I count, believe, Councilor Anderson did not bring up Iris Festival. So Iris Festival is coming and I know that they're needing lots of volunteers, so. I missed that. So I'm sure you can check with the chamber. As always, we'll all be in the parade and there's lots of events. There's Crown the Hound that Council Reed and I will be at. And just, I know they have great entertainment lined up and lots and lots of activities. So look forward to seeing everyone there. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Council Ryan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I didn't forget the budget meeting that we went, but mostly because I wanted to say not only thank you, but it was so nice to not be debating and fighting for our police and our parks. And I can't tell you how much that meant to me and I think the whole budget committee. It was a huge relief. And then I want to say thank you also for the mayor's prayer work and the city staff, Tracy's, all Tracy's work. It was wonderful. I wish we could do it, not every day, but maybe every week. I just, I absolutely love it. I attended the Volcano's Ribbon Cutting. Their facility is beautiful. It sounds like it's going to be used for the community and kids, so that's exciting as well. I will look forward to visiting with the County Commissioners Breakfast. There's lots of chat about there on Thursday as well. And what Council Reed didn't mention to you in the fabulous play that we went and saw is that her son was one of the main stars. And I have to tell you, it was the first play I've been able to attend for Homegrown Theater, so I know you all get to do it all the time, but I really haven't. And so that was a treat and he was wonderful and I'm sure you're very proud. So congratulations on that. And of course, we have, I know we've mentioned the 70th anniversary for our firefighters and I just want to say an extra thank you, but not only for their 70, because of their 70th, but because all of the new for our community. And I'm excited that they're going to cook me pancakes for, you know, breakfast on Sunday. And just really happy Mother's Day to everyone. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Just a couple of things to wrap up with. On the 17th, I met with Sarah Spinks at Marion County talking about the broadband study. I mentioned that a couple of meetings ago that they asked people to get online and do a survey. They're accumulating that data and they were able to do a carve-out for Kaiser. So they can track the broadband access and performance in Kaiser. What they're doing is they're mapping out broadband services as part of a bigger issue, looking at broadband services because 5G is coming. And that is going to be a game changer for a lot of businesses in our region. So they're doing the background work now. That's going to be very helpful for us as we move forward, working in collaboration with Marion County. On the 18th, I went to the Brook Lake Interchange I-5 Transportation Study. This is not a full interchange area management plan, but it's kind of the entree to that discussion. Particularly around the facilities for May Trucking, which is a major family wage employer for our region. So I'm very happy to have a seat at that table along with Nate Brown. So we'll be following that process very carefully. As many of you know, especially if you live in the north part of Kaiser, Brook Lake functions as our second interchange. A lot of people use that to get to the freeway and our businesses use it. So we have a very, very keen interest on how that process goes forward to make that a better functioning interchange. I went to the Career Technical Education Center Quarterly Meeting on the 23rd. There was a wonderful presentation by students on how they explored their career opportunities and how each of those strands translate into family wage jobs right out of the program there. It's a very impressive results with a high graduation rate and the students are being hired right out of that program into great jobs. So they're doing something new this year. It's called Signing Night. You see that for the student athletes, they're doing it for C-Tech, the incoming students. So that will be on, actually it's Wednesday night, the 9th. So I'll be going there. It's open to people who want to attend and celebrate with the students who are entering that program for the next school year. On the 24th, we had SCATS, which is the Salem-Kaiser Area Transportation Study, All Things Transportation. The big conversation was around funding for the Salem River Crossing and explaining to some of the folks that would like to not cross the river that it's an $8 million grant assurance to the Federal Department of Transportation that is funding that environmental impact study. So if they don't complete it, we will be out of compliance with that grant. So completing that is something that has to get done. And I look forward to that, getting to the finish line and getting turned into the feds for the next step. On the 26th, the Mid-Willamette Herit, Mid-Willamette Homeless Initiative Steering Committee met and a budget you heard from Ally Trichol, who is the program manager. So you got an update there. At OMPAC, the Oregon Municipal Planning Consortium, More Things Transportation. That was at Grants Pass last week. And the big conversation piece is the Transportation Planning Rule, the good old TPR, which they are proposing some language that is supposed to make it a little simpler. But as you know, the devil's in the details. So we had a very robust conversation about some of the details that many of the municipalities are concerned about that will actually hamper our ability to get projects done and have to do more studies or other data that is, in my opinion, repetitive and slow down our ability to deliver projects. So I'm watching it very closely to make sure that that doesn't get in the way of doing the kind of work we need to do with our transportation system plan. I want to join with Council Reed. I was also able to attend the Wright Club Writing Slam and it was an honor to hear what Eric and the students in that club, the authors, the young authors in that club. They are accomplished. They are profound communicators in the written language and I want to congratulate all of them. It was an honor to hear their work. So look forward to seeing more good work coming from those authors. McNary Jazz Night was Saturday night and there was a very nice thank you on the back of the program to Christian Bouvier and the City of Kaiser for contributions and service to making this project, that program, very nice. So I want to give a shout out to Christian for her work in helping that event. And last but not least, the Kaiser Heritage Center and the Cultural Center did a volunteer appreciation. I would like to congratulate the foundation honorary this year, Volunteer Award to Lyndon Zeitz. Art honored Anita Zaneheiser Theater. Award to Lyndon Zeitz, Art honored Anita Zanheiser Theater, honored Dr. Tim Reed, and the Museum honored Tammy Wild, and we were treated to a dress rehearsal performance of Fox on the Fairway, got to see it, folks, it's hilarious. All right, that kind of wraps it up. Counselor Anderson.
Madam Mayor, sorry, I neglected one thing, if I might, I, since I was out, I thank you for allowing me to go south to the graduation, but, so I'm sorry I missed your second meeting there, Tim, but I wanted to thank you, Madam Mayor, for sitting in for me at Clogga Creek Watershed Council, so I appreciate you, you standing in for me, so I appreciate that. Sorry I wasn't able to make it, Matt, but anyway, and I have to say one final thing, since we're talking about teachers, they did such a phenomenal job with all of my kids, but especially my oldest, since she is a product of Salem-Kaiser Public School, she graduated summa cum laude from her college, so, there you go, we have good kids coming out, and thanks to our teachers here, so thank you.
Fantastic. All right, the one thing I want to add to all the other things that people mentioned that are coming up is the St. Monica's will be dedicated on the 16th, and I will be attending that. St. Monica's is a part of the Father Taft Homes, and it's that new apartment complex on Apple Blossom, so I'm very excited that that will be opening soon and providing housing for mothers and children. Yeah, and then, last but not least, is the Salem Kaiser Coalition for Equality Luncheon is on the 17th, and I will be attending that. I want to thank Counselor Freeman and Counselor Reed for covering Crown the Hound on the 19th after the parade, I will be at the Kaiser Art Association Tea by the Sea, and I want to thank Counselors Herrera and Parsons and Reed for speaking to the avid sophomore class at McNary on the 21st, and if anybody can cover the Turnaround Lunch, Awards Lunch on the 23rd, please let me know, that I can't make it, it's the middle of the day, and I have to be at a meeting for that paid job thing I've got, yeah. I'm out of town.
I think you said the 23rd, right?
23rd is the Turnaround Awards.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, Counselor Freeman, I really appreciated you mentioning the Irish Parade and Festival, I totally missed that, maybe it's because I'm going to be occupied at the Rotary District 5100 Conference that's coming next week, so, sorry, but thank you for mentioning that, I totally slipped my mind.
All right, and also, thanks to Counselor Freeman for chairing the Budget Committee this year, he did a fabulous job. All right, so, if anybody gets the sense that we are letting any mosque under our feet, we're not. Other business, this time is provided to allow the mayor, city council members, or staff, an opportunity to bring new or old matters before the council that are not on tonight's agenda. City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Tracy. Tim? No, Bill? Nate? Shannon.
You do.
That was quick. So, turns out that I do tonight, there's still chewing over here. Madam Mayor and Council, I have a little, something a little out of order, and I put it on your dais, and I apologize for the late email today, I was, I was out Friday, and expected to do this in the morning, and then things got away from me. So, you may have remembered, because I think we alerted the Council to this, back in January, Eamon Bishop filed an application to designate both the new city property, which was deeded from the Herbers, the lower portion, as we would call it, between the bottom of the slope and the creek, as well as the Herbert property and the structures thereon, with a historical designation, so our code allows a non-property owner to start that process. So Nate's department and Shane started to process that application, and I was involved and noted, and I want to thank Shane for a lot of this, too, because he dug real deep into it, that ORS 197.772 indicates that if a, a single property owner refuses to consent, then that just removes the property from any form of consideration for historical property designation, except for a national historic registry. Because of that, I sent a letter to Eamon dated February 13, and you can see it attached to the email I sent, and for the public, obviously, this email is not a confidential email, this is kind of in the form of a off-the-record, off-the-agenda staff report because of the urgency that Eamon wants this to be brought up with. Because of the language of the statute, we sent that to the Herbert family, and one of the Herbert members signed a refusal to consent, and marked the box and sent it in, and so we sent a letter to Eamon saying, due to the statute and due to the fact the property owner refused to consent, that we can no longer, under state statute, we can't consider it at all, that's the way the language read. So I sent that in, on February 13, as you may know, the demolition of some of the structures on the Herbert property's been going forward, that demolition permit was acquired quite a bit before Eamon even filed his application, so it was already, demolition permit was in hand by the Herbers, and I'm not sure, but I'm thinking, because he noticed that, he applied last week, if you will, for an emergency stay of the demolition permit. I looked into it, and frankly, I don't see any grounds on a validly issued demolition permit to revoke or suspend that permit, and of course, my concern is, is if we, if the city attempted to do so, the Herbers would have legal recourse against the city. So, Mr. Bishop had the opportunity, under the land use decision, that some of you might have been hearing for, I wasn't quite sure, because it's been almost two years ago, allowed six months to a year, I think, to, for someone to kind of come up with a plan and move that forward, and no one, no one came up, so, and there was no appeal of that land use decision, and then, in addition to that, there was no appeal, unless you want to call this an appeal, of the staff decision, my decision, essentially, to say, you know, the state law requires us to just stop this historical designation process, because that's the way the law read. There's a stat, part of the statute is that if somebody submits an application for historical designation, regardless of where that application is going, that someone, that you can't, the local government cannot issue a demolition permit for 120 days, even if that designation's going anywhere, it's kind of a cooling-off period, if you will, but the problem with Eamon's projection there is that it was already issued before that, so if the Herbers had not applied for a demolition permit, not received a demolition permit prior to when Eamon submitted his application for historical designation, then he would be correct, but that's not what happened, so they already had demolition permit in hand, and we don't really have a way to revoke or suspend that. His other argument, because I talked to him, and he was very civil, and we had a very nice discussion, I've known Eamon for quite some time, his other argument is that the lower portion, which is now owned by the city, that the city did not refuse to consent. And I said, well, I understand your argument, Eamon, but it was one application, and the law says that the application doesn't go forward, so I don't, I don't see the city going forward to process that. So, with all that being said, and you can see my letter in the attachments there, this is one of those things that is not, it's not a public hearing, so the Herbers have no notice of this, and, and so I don't want to think that you're going to make, you really would be in a position to make any kind of permanent decision that would affect them without them having some say, but considering that, and considering that I don't see any way that the city can revoke that permit, my advice is that you not take any action on this, and it doesn't require a vote, in fact, it would make sense to have a vote even to not take action, because that in itself would be a decision, if you will, and that would not be appropriate on something that you really don't have authority to make a decision on. So my advice is to, I'll take any questions that you might have on the matter, but unless there's a different feeling strongly, that the, the Council will take no action tonight on, on this, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions? All right, I don't see any, I think your explanation, both this and in the email, were very clear.
Okay.
All right, appreciate the work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, that is it. So, going on to the last item on the list, which is Written Communications, I don't have anything to share with you tonight. Agenda input, we have canceled the work session, so we can attend the 70th Anniversary Celebration at the Kaiser Fire District. On May 21st, we will meet at 7:00 in regular session, and June 4th, 7:00 in regular session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Seeing done, it is 9:00, and we are adjourned.